Good day, everyone. This is linear algebra 2, contest 204. And we're having two units, the two unit course. And this, eh, course we are going to do that. C's half line. The first one is a review of matrices. The second one is a system of linear algebra. Linear transformation, Kelly, Alimting. Then the diagonalizations of symmetric matrix. While the last one, we look at binormies and quadratic form. For this, we are going to look at the study session one, which is a review of matrices. When you are talking of a matrices, what does it mean? It's an array of numbers arranging row and column. The matrix is of order m by n, which is written as m multiplied by n. Where your m is the numbers of row and your n is the numbers of column. And it is being represented as follows. Each number, as you have your matrix A now, which is a, a matrix of order m by n. Each number a i j is the matrix. In the matrix, it refers to the elements. You have the elements, no? The numbers are in the括号 brackets. The figures you have in that括号 bracket is what we call the elements. I and J represent the i row and the j column respectively. In which the elements appear. A matrix is called real or complex according as it is. Element, that is, if the numbers are real. So we call it a re- eh, eh, matrix. And if the figures, what you have there, the entries, if they are complex, you call them a complex matrix. Then we have what we call a triangular matrix. When do you have a triangular matrix? When your m is not equal to n, that is, the numbers of row is not equal to the numbers of column. In such a matrix, you call them a rectangular matrix. And in the other way around, if you have your m to be equal to n, that is, they have the same, the numbers of the, the order of the, I mean the entries, the column now. Your m and your n, if they are equal, then you have it as a square matrix. If a matrix has only one row, irrespective of the numbers of column, we call them the row vectors. That is, you have your R V. We have the element, the entries there. Like the example we have here, we have a 1 1, a 1 2, dot 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 3. A 1 n, that is a row vector. You're having just a single row with several numbers of column. Then we have what we call the column vectors. Where you have just a, a single column, a single column. Or you can have as many row as possible, but just a single column. That one is called the column vector. And this column vector can be transpose, that is, when you are talking of the transpose of a matrix, we are talking of rearrangement of the matrix. If it is a row before, you change it to a column. If the column, if you want to find a transpose, it will change to row. So that is denotes the transpose. Column vector, your C half, which is a a 1 1, a 1 2, dot dot, a 1 n. You put in a bracket, then transpose, that is raised to power t. Then your t is what we know as the transpose of a matrix. If your m is not equal to n and is not equal to 1, as I've explained, in that case, we have what we call the rectangular matrix. And if they are equal, if your m is equal to n, you have a square matrix. It can either be real or a complex, depending on the value you have as an entry. So when you have a complex number, you know what does, eh, what it means to have a complex? When you are having the root or i, so you're having a complex. So the elements you have there will determine whether it's complex or a real one. Then let's say a and b be two matrices of the same order. The two matrices are equal if and only if your a i j is equal to a j pi. Where your a i j and a j pi are the elements of a and b respectively. That is, if they are equal. If they are equal, your a i j will be equal to a j pi. And the next one, we look at the operations. And when you have a number, you can perform the basic operations on them. And you have your addition, you have your subtraction. So the same thing is applicable to our matrices. We want to look at the addition and subtractions of matrices. Two or more matrices are addable or subtractable. He and only if they are of the same order. Before you can add or subtract any matrix, they must have the same order. For that addition or subtraction, to be able to work out, their order must be the same. If your m is of order 2, that means your B, your matrix B must be of order 2. If a and b have two matrices of the same order, then m plus b is equal to c. That is, the matrix A plus or minus matrix B. You can add or subtract, so you get another matrix, which is your c. Now, when you are adding, you are not just having a single value. You are going to have your results as a matrix. Your result will be in a matrix form. So that is how we have c, matrix c. That is, your a i j plus or minus b i j is equal to c i j. That is, when you are adding two matrices, you are adding matrix A to B. Your row, the first row on your matrix A, you add it with the first column on your matrix B. Then it will give you the first element in your c, in your matrix c. That is, you have c pi j, that is the addition of the first row and the first column. So you continue in that order till when you have, when you have your matrix c. Note, matrix addition is commutative. What does that mean? It means that you can decide to add a plus b. Or you take it as b plus a. When you do that, you have the same answer. That is what is meant to be commutative. It doesn't mean, it doesn't, eh, the arrangement now doesn't matter. You can decide to add a plus b or b plus a. You will still have the same result, that is commutative. Then we have the, eh, associativity. A matrix addition is associative, that is, a plus b into bracket plus c is equal to a plus b plus c in bracket. That is, you can decide to take your matrix A, add it to matrix B, your results add it to matrix C. Or you can decide to take matrix B and C, do, perform the addition, perform the addition, add the two together, then take your matrix A and add it to that result of B and C. You will still have the same results. That is what you mean to say a matrix addition is associative. Then the next one, we look at the multiplication of matrix by a scalar. What do you mean by a scalar? It's just a number, a constant used to multiply a matrix. So if a is equal to a i j and lambda is any scalar, that is any number. You can take any number, any constants. Then lambda h is equal to a lambda. That is, you can decide to put a, put a constant at the back or put it at the front. You will still have the same results. Then we look at multiplications of matrices. If you are given two matrices now, you want to multiply matrix A by B. How do you go about it? A multiplication algebra is defined on a matrices A and B. If and only the numbers of matrix A is the same as the numbers of row of matrix B. That is, that multiplication can only be possible if and only if the numbers of column. The column you have in H is the same as the numbers of row that you have in B. Let's think at a practical example now. We have our matrix A to be a matrix of, eh, 1, 2, 3, then 2, 1, 4. While your matrix B is a 1, 2, then 2, 1, minus 1, minus 4. What does that mean? That your H now, we have 2 row and 3 column. That is, a matrix of 2 by 3, 2 row and 3 column. Then you have your B, which is a 2 by 3, that is, you have, okay, 3 by 2. You have 3 row but 2 column. 3 row, 2 column. And your A is 2 row, 3 column. This can only be possible if you have it this way. Hmm? A multiplication can only be possible if you have it this way. That is, the numbers of row of B must be the same as the numbers of column in H before that multiplication can be possible. So let's look at the product now. A multiplied by B. The first row, which is, eh, what are the elements you have in the first row? You have 4, minus 2, minus 3. You see, to multiply the first column on a matrix B, and you have it as 4. When you perform the oper- eh, the, the, the simple operation there, the arithmetic operation there, the result will give you 4. Then take the first row on A to multiply the second column on B. When you do that, you will have the result as minus 8. That is, 4 multiplied by 2 plus minus 2 multiplied by 1 plus minus 3 multiplied by minus 4. So when you find the, the addition and subtraction, you will have it as minus 8. So you have done the first row now for the products. We are left with the second row. So take the second row of element of a matrix A. That is, the elements you have in a matrix A, the second row. Use it to multiply the first, the first column in B and the second column in B. You will have your result as 1 and minus 11. So the product now, the product of the two matrices has given us a matrix C, which is a 4 minus 8, the 1 minus 11. Note this, in general, a matrix multiplication is not always commutative. It's not always commutative. What does that mean? You can still recall that when you are doing, eh, when you are performing an operations on a matrix A and B, when you are adding, you can add a plus b to be the same thing as b plus a. But in this case, not commutative. We are saying that if you are multiplying A by 2, eh, by, by B, that is, matrix A multiplied by matrix B is not always equal to, multiply B, matrix B, by matrix A. It's not always commutative. So there are some cases you may have it, but it's not a constant thing. So you should note that. Multiplication, matrix multiplication is not always commutative. Then, another thing to note. F dot A is always, is defined if and only if A is a square matrix. That is, if you want to multiply matrix A by matrix A, that means the matrix A must be of the same order. There must be a square matrix. That is, the numbers of the column must be equal to the numbers of row for you to be able to multiply there. Then, the last one to note. If A is a square matrix, then A raised to power n is equal to F dot A raised to power n minus 1. Where your n is greater than 1. Your n is greater than 1. That is, when you are having such a thing, you are having, maybe your m is a, your m is 2, that means you are having n minus 1, which is 1. That is, you are multiplying matrix A by matrix A. If you are having your m to be 2, to be 3, that means you are having A raised to power n minus, eh, A raised to power 3 minus 1, which is A squared. That means you are having A multiplied by A squared. So you first find the, the A squared, that is, you multiply matrix A by matrix A before you now multiply A multiplied by the square. So you find the products. If they are of the same order, take note of that. Then, we look at matrix transpose. I've explained that, when you are talking of transpose, you are talking of rearranging. You rearrange, if it's in column, you change it to row, that is transpose. This is the interchange of row and column of a matrix A. It is denoted by A raised to power t. And you see, any matrix raised to power of t, either matrix A, matrix B, or matrix C. Any matrix raised to power t, it means the transpose. What does that mean? They are telling you that to change the row to column. This means that if A is equal to a 1, then A transpose is equal to a 2. Look at this example now. You have a 2 to be equal to 2, 1, 3, then 2, 1, 4. Then, to find A transpose now, that means this, the elements you have in a A now, A 2, you have 2 row and 3 column. 2 row and 3 column. If you want to find a transpose, it will be what? It's going to give us, eh, 2 column, that is, 3 row and 2 column, because you are rearranging. The first row will come to the first column. The second row will come to the second column. So you are going to have 3 by 2 matrix. You are going to have 3 by 2 matrix, because you are having the first row, the second row, and the third row with 2 column. We are following. Note, a plus b transpose is also the same thing as A transpose plus b transpose. If you have it as a product, A dot b transpose, it's also the same thing as b transpose multiplied by A transpose. Take note of that. A dot b transpose is equal to b dot A, eh, b transpose dot A transpose. Take note of that arrangement. Then we have a, A transpose, then transpose again. You will have it as your H, that is, you take the transpose again. You rearrange twice, you will still go back to your H. You rearrange your H twice. If you take, if you rearrange, you take the transpose twice, you will go back to the normal matrix. If A is a square matrix and A transpose is equal to A, that is, you have a square matrix. And your A transpose is also the same thing as A. Hmm? That's not changed, you still have the same entry. In such a matrix, we have, we call it a symmetric matrix. Take note, we call it a symmetric matrix. If your, if the transpose of A is equal to A, we have it as a symmetric matrix. In the other way around, if the transpose of A is equal to minus A, that is, there's a slight change in the entry. Maybe you have 0, 2, minus 2, 0. By the time you find the transpose, you see that where the minus is before has changed. The position has changed to another, to another, eh, point, another entry. That is, there is a design as you have a negative sign on a particular entry there. That means that such a matrix is a skew matrix. So take notes. Any real matrix can always be expressed as a sum of real symmetric matrix and real skew symmetric matrix. That is, you can find the sum of those eh, matrices. So look at the example we have here. Look at the entries of this matrix here. We have 1, 0, 0, 1. When you take the transpose of this matrix, that is, the first row, which is 1, 0. Bring it to the column, you also have 1, 0. The second row, take it to the column, you have the 0, 1. So the arrangement does not change the matrix. So that is why this particular example demonstrates, eh, eh, a symmetric matrix. That is, it's an examples of symmetric matrix. Look at the second one, 1, 2, then 2, 1. When you rearrange, you still have it as the same entries. Look at the third one, you, they are all symmetric. Look at the Roman figure 2. It's an examples of a skew matrix. You have the 0, 2, then minus 2, 0. When you rearrange, you have the 0 minus 2, then the next one will be 2, 0. So you see that the one that are having negative, the negative number there, it has changed from, eh, row 2, column 1, that changed to row 1, column 2. So that makes it to be a skew symmetric matrix. So we want to look at another size of a matrix again. We look at what we call a principal diagonal. Yes, a principal diagonal, where you have a matrix. You look at what are the, what are the elements you have in that matrix? How does those elements, what can you say about, what can you see about those eh, elements? Let's look at the example we have here. Given that A is equal to a pi, hmm? They are square, it's a square matrix. Then the diagonal, which consists all elements of a i j, for which h is equal to j. That is, where you have the element of the matrix. You know, you have your pi to be the row and your j to be the column. If the numbers of the row is equal to the numbers of column, that is where you have 1, 1, a 1, eh, a 1, 1, a 2, 2, a 3, 3, a 4, 4, a 5, 5, t, a, m, n. That is, on those diagonal, hmm? If you have it that way, then you have it as a diagonal matrix. It's known as a principal or main diagonal of H. And it has been listed out here. The principal diagonal here is a 1, 1, a 2, 2, dot, 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 t, a, m, n. This one is an examples of a principal, eh, principal diagonal. Then we look at the unity matrix. A square matrix A, which is equal to a i j. In which a i j is equal to 1. A i j is equal to 1 for i equals to j, that is, for i equals to j. When you have the entries, you have the row, row 1, column 1, to be 1. Row 2, column 2, to be 1. Row 3, column 3, to be 1. Row 4, column 4, to be 1, and so on. And all other entries, they are 0. Top of the upper one and the lower one. The upper of that one and the lower of that one. If you have the entries as 0, we call them, we call such matrix as a unity matrix. That is, your a i j is equal to 0 when i not equal to j. That is, when the numbers of row are not equal to the numbers of column, the elements at that point is equal to 0. But when you have it as the same, when the numbers of row is equal to the numbers of column, you have the entries as 1, that is what we call a unity matrix. This matrix plays the role of an identity matrix in the matrix multiplication. So this one is what you also call the identity matrix. So when you are given a matrix, how do you find the determinant? We want to look at the determinant, the visions of determinants. What do you mean by determinant? Determinant is the value associated with a met- with a square matrix A of order m. Hmm? The value associated to that matrix of the same order, that is the determinant. It may be denoted as death. When evaluate its value, it's giving us that A, that is, you put the entries in the inside, eh, 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 course. That is, you put, eh, it's just like a modulus. You put the entry inside there, then you find the determinant. And that determinant is the same thing as the summation from i, from j equals to hi to m of a hi j, that is small a i j, then capital A i j. What's the meaning of this? Your A, the capital A i j is the new determinant. Hmm? Is the new determinant from the main one, from the main matrix you are given. Is the new determinant of the square matrix obtained by eliminating the highs, row and the high column. That is, when you want to find the determinant, you want to find the determinant of a matrix A. You have entries. Hmm? Looking at the first entry, your a 1, 1, that is the, the row 1 and the column 1. If you want to look, look at the point, if you want to look at, find the values on that point, you are going to pick that value, then multiply by the determinant of another news, eh, new matrix inside that place. That is, you are going to cancel out the first row and the first column. If you are picking the first entry, which is a 1, 1, you cancel out the first row and the first column. Then you bring out the remaining entries you have, which is a, taking a 1, 1, you are left with a 2, 2, a 2, 3, a 2, 4. Then the second row, a 3, 2, a 3, 3, a 3, 4. Then the third row, you have a 4, 2, a 4, 3, a 4, 4. That is the first one. Then come to column 2. On column 2, you have your a 1, 2. Bring it out, then cancel out that column and that first row. So when you cancel out, you are left with column 1, column 3, and column 4. Bring them together, find the determinants again. The third entry, that is, column, row 1, column 3. Cancel out that row 1, column 3. The other entries in that big matrix, bring them out and find their determinants. That's what we have here. Then, you know, you are still having 3 by 3 in this, in that determinant. That means you are going to repeat that procedure on again. You are going to bring out for the first one now. You are going to bring out for the first one now, you are going to bring out A two, two. That is, you cancel out the first row and the first column. You find the determinant. Hmm, you find the cross product of A three, three, A, A three, four, then A four, three, A four, four. You multiply them together with what you have outside, you will have your value. So if you follow that procedure, you will get a minus. What are the, the basic properties of this determinant? Let's look at them. The values of determinant remain unchanged in the event of interchange of row and column. That is, when you interchange the row and the column, you will still have the same thing, you still have the same value when you find the determinant. When you take the transpose of a particular matrix, you find the determinant. And when you take that matrix, you find the determinant, you will discover that their value will be the same thing. Then, and interchange of any true row or cha, or column, change the signs of determinant. When you interchange, it will change the signs of that determinant. Multiply all elements in any row or column by a scalar product of the same results as multiply the determinant by the scalar. That is, when you are given a, a matrix, and you are also given a, a scalar, that is a constant value, you want to multiply them. When you find the determinant and you multiply by that scalar, your result will be the same as when you find the determinant and multiply by that eh eh the number, the constant value, which is your la eh your scalar. So the results are the same thing. So when you go through all these properties and you for example to establish what we are saying here, whether it's true or not. So we have, let's be, V one, V two, V three, and so on to V N, be a row or column vectors of the square matrix A of an order N. The determinant of A is equals to zero if and only if they are escale, they are scalars. Alpha one, alpha two, to alpha N, not all zero. Such that the product of those vector with the, the scalar is equals to zero, where your zero is a zero vector. That is, when you are given a matrix, you want to find whether they are linearly dependent or independent. You get the matrix, you multiply by the scalar, then you solve for that scalars. Hmm, you equate them to zero. And mind you, the scalar, they are not zero. They are not zero. They are not zero. In such a situation, we call them linear dependent. If otherwise, they are said to be linear independent. Let's look at example to demonstrate that eh proof. The row vectors of other three matrix is given as this. We have your A to be equals to two, minus one, three, one, two, one, one, two, minus one, minus three, four, minus seven. This is a matrix. The first thing for you to do is to find the determinants of that matrix. If you find the determinants of this matrix, you will discover that the determinant is equals to zero. I've given you the steps of how to find the determinants of a matrix. By taking your two, then cancel out the first rows and the first column, you are left with two, minus one, four, minus seven. Multiply them together. You have two multiplied by minus seven, then plus four. You have the value there. Add it with the second one. Perform the same operation, then add in your third one. You will have your determinants to be equals to zero. Then, to show now that they are linearly dependent, you introduce a scalar, and our scalar is alpha. You know, you are having eh three vectors now. You have the three vectors, that is, you have the three row. Hmm, you have the three row. Vector one, vector two, vector three. So when you multiply them by the scalar one, scalar two, and scalar three, you have a system of equations which is given here. Two alpha one plus alpha two, minus three alpha three, which is equals to zero, that is equation one. Then minus two, and minus alpha, minus alpha one, plus two alpha two, plus four alpha three, which is equals to zero, that is equation two, equation two. Then minus alpha one, minus alpha two, minus seven, alpha three, is equals to zero, that is the third equation. So when you use your, this is simultaneous equation. So when you solve it, you can either solve by method of elimination. Hmm, you find a way to eliminate one of the variable that you have here to get, to get, you reduce it to a two. Then from that two, you get one out of the two. You substitute your result into the next equation to get the next variable. Then when you get that, you also substitute to another equation to get the, the third variable. When you do that, you will have your alpha one to be two, your alpha two to be one, and your alpha three to be minus one. You can see that you have equated all the three equations to zero. And with that, your value, your constants, your scalars, they are not zero. Hence, V one, V two, V three are linearly dependent. They are linearly dependent. So we have established that. Then the next one, we look at what we call a singular matrix. When you say a matrix is singular? A matrix is said to be singular if their determinant is equals to zero. That is, when you are giving it eh 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 a matrix, and you find the determinants of that matrix, if it's equals to zero, then it is a singular matrix. Hmm, you cannot go further, you cannot solve. It's, it's not, it's not that easy to solve. But when you are given a matrix and you find the determinants, and you are getting a value, then you can proceed to solve that matrix. So in that case, it would be, it would be easy for you to find the inverse of that eh matrix. But if they are singular, you cannot find the inverse of that eh matrix. Let's look at the example we have here. Here is equals to one, two, one, two again. Here is a singular, is singular, since the debt A is equals to zero. So when you find the determinants of this, you have one times two minus one times two, to give you one minus two, I mean, to give you two minus two, which is zero. That means this is a singular matrix. So if you tested eh a matrix and is singular, you know that, there's another way to solve that. You can't use your, you can't find the inversion, you can't find the inverse of that eh matrix. But if you are given a matrix and tested, you, you, you find the determinant of that matrix, you are able to get the value, then you proceed to find the inverse of that eh matrix. And when you are talking of inverse, how do you go about that? Hmm, given a non-singular square matrix, for a matrix to have an inverse, it must not be singular. That is, it must be a non-singular matrix. Given an, a non-singular matrix, a square matrix A of order N, if there exists a matrix B, such that A B is equals to I and is equals to B A, then A B is called the inverse of A. That is, B is called the inverse of A. For you to find the inverse of any matrix, it must be a non-singular matrix. And when you multiply that inverse with the original matrix given to you, you will have an identity matrix, which is, which we call I. I is an identity. You can still recall what an identity matrix is when you have your diagonal as one, 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 the entries should be one. While the upper one and the lower one will be zero. That is an, an identity matrix. Note, a non-singular square matrix A of order N has a unique inverse A raised to power minus one, such that A raised to, that is, the inverse of A multiplied by A is equals to I. Is equals to I. And when you do that, you can find the inverse. The inverse is equals to the, the adjoint of a matrix. That is, find the transpose of that matrix over the determinants. Where your A I J, the capital A I J, is the matrix of cofactors of A I J. And eh the A I J transpose, eh A I J raised to power T is the transpose of A I J. That is, you find the transpose. After getting your minus eh, you find the minus of that matrix. After getting the minus, you find the, 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 the cofactor. You find the transpose, then you introduce the sign. Then you have your adjoint divided by the debt A. That will give you the inverse of the matrix. So let's look at the next example that we have here. Find the inverse of a matrix A. These are the entry for matrix A. We have two, one, minus one, one, minus two, three, minus two, one, and two. So the first thing for you to do, find the determinants of this matrix. You know how to find the determinants? Take the first row and the first column, the first element in first row, the first element, the first entry, which is two. So take it out, multiply by, cancel out the, the first row and the first column, what you have there, multiply them together with that two, keep that value. Then, the next one, do the second eh, the, 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 the second column. Cancel out the second column and the first row, multiply the, the remaining entry, that is, one, minus two, then three, two. Do that, you will, when you do the, the additions and subtraction, your determinant is equals to minus nineteen. Your determinant is equals to minus nineteen. Then from there, find the minus of that matrix. How do you find the minus? I've explained, the minus is when you take the first entry, you cancel the first entry, that is, the first column, the first row and the first column. Find the determinant of the other elements you have in that eh matrix. Get that value, put it down. Do for the second one, that is, the, the first row and the second column. Cancel out the first row and the second column. The remaining entries, multiply them together, add, multiply them together, that is, find the determinants. You will have your minus four. Then, do it to the next one, you have eh eh minus one. So you cancel out the first row and the for, the third column. So the remaining entries, find the determinants, you will have your minus five. So if you continue that way, you will have a minus which is given as your A I J. A I J. I haven't gotten that. Now when you are doing that, you have to introduce your, your, the, yeah, the signs. The signs, which is eh minus one raised to power I plus one. That is, as you are multiplying, as you are finding determinants, you include that eh value. So if you are fast in the areas of sign, if you have your I to be one, that means I want to have one plus one. That means minus one raised to power one, ah minus one raised to power two will give you positive. So the first entry will be positive. The next one will be negative. The third one will be positive. The next one will be negative. So it should just be alternating the sign, to alternating the sign. See, when you are true with, depending on the numbers of entries you have in that eh matrix. So I haven't done that, you now find the transpose of that eh eh your results, you find the transpose. So that means I want to take the row to the column, follow that pattern, then you have that, that is your adjoints. We call that set and adjoint. So that adjoint divided by the determinant will give you the inverse of that eh matrix, which is given here. So the next one is a special matrix. What are the special matrices? We have the orthogonal matrix, orthogonal. And orthogonal matrix is a rematrix A whose transpose is the same as its inverse. That is, you are giving a matrix A. Hmm, you find the transpose of that eh matrix, and you also find the inverse of their matrix. You see that their entries are the same thing. So that means that matrix is an orthogonal matrix. It's an orthogonal matrix. If A transpose is equals to A inverse, if they are the same, it is an orthogonal matrix. The term orthogonal is used in linear algebra to describe two vector that are at right angle. So we look at another special matrix, which is eh unitary matrices. A complex matrix whose transpose of its conjugates is the same as its inverse is called a unitary matrix. When you are talking of unitary, you are talking of a complex eh eh matrix. That is, the entries, the figures you have there, the elements you have in that matrix, they are a complex number. Hmm, they are a complex number. So when you find the conjugates of that eh matrix, that is, whose transpose of its conjugates is the same as its inverse. So when you find the conjugate, that is, you reverse the signs of that eh matrix and the, the, the inverse of that matrix, if they are the same, you call them a unitary matrix. Example, given P to be a vector, P one, one, P one, two, P one, three, and Q to be given as Q one, one, Q one, two, and Q one, three. Then, P transpose, that is, the conjugate of P transpose, multiplied by Q is equals to, when you are talking of transpose, you are rearranging. Hmm, we change the row to column, then you multiply by the next eh matrix, which is given as this. Then, this scalar product, that is, when you are multiplying the product, when you multiply these eh matrix together, this scalar product of P and Q. P and Q are orthogonal. If this scalar product is zero, that is, if you multiply them and the result is zero. If the vector are read, then the set of vector is called autonormal sets. Take notes, is called autonormal set. That is, when you are given a matrix, hmm, a, 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 a complex one, you multiply then, you find the conjugates of that P. Then, you find the transpose of that P, you multiply by the next trans eh, by the next matrix. The products give you zero. If the products give you zero, then you have what you call autonormal sets. If A is a unitary matrix, then A transpose multiplied by A is equals to one. This implies that the unitary me eh column vector is a unity vector. A unitary vector is a set of a vector. A unitary vector is a set of a vector X one, S two to X n. For which, A i, A i transpose multiplied by eh, X j equals to. That is, when we find the products. The, 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 the transpose of that eh, matrix and the original matrix. If the product give you zero, for i not equals to j, you have a zero. Therefore, i equals to j, you have one. So we are trying to explain the autonormal sets and the orthogonal matrix. Let's look at example that we have here. Let X one be equals to a vector, which is roots two over two. Minus i root two over two, then zero. And our X two, so so given as vector, hi squared root two over two. Then minus root two over two, then zero. And your vector eh, X three is given as zero, zero, one. Then, we want to do the multiplication now. We find the transpose of X one. That is, X one bar transpose. So you transpose X one. When you transpose X one, it's a column vector. You transpose it from that, it's just a single column. So when you change it, it will be in a row. Then, you multiply it by that X one. When you do the multiplication, you will have your result as one. Similarly, what you do for X two and X three, you will have your result as one. But in the other way around, when you put A one and A two, when you, when you find A one transpose. You multiply it by two. That is, when your hi equals to j, the product will give you one. But when your hi is not equals to j, the product will give you zero. The product will give you zero. So we have it here to be equals to zero. Therefore, the set of vector is a unitary vector, is a unitary set, is a unitary set. So, if you have any questions, we will attend to that in our interactive class.